Hi guys, welcome back to my channel. I am Princess of Aesthetically Princess. If you are here, hi, hello. My name is Princess. Today is going to be a very hands-on day. I know last video I said this was gonna be like a two-parter and like self-care. Yeah, that didn't end up happening. A lot went on and uh here we are. Friday. April 26th and I have things to do. Uh one of those things is I have a lot of homework to do, so it is officially the end of the semester. I'm so very excited. The semester is almost over. I have two weeks of break before I have to go straight back in doing classes for like another month and a half. Which I'm fine with because like after that I have like a full month or like month or two off. And then just be able to like scoot along and I have so much going on in that last month of the summer, so. My mind is everywhere at the moment, so. Today I have to sit down and I have to do a bunch of homework, just the last minute stuff that I guess hasn't been turned in this weekend. I work tomorrow but I'm off Sunday, so today's gonna be mainly getting everything that's due tomorrow and then the things that are due. Sunday are like waiting for like if I have time today or tomorrow morning or Sunday. Like so I have a lot going on. I have two, I have three essays in total that I need to type today, so let's uh stop. Let's pause. Let's make a list of the things that I have to do today. We shall do so on the tablet. Cause honestly, if I don't sit down and I make this gosh darn list. Girl, we all fucked. Okay, so. Let's make a list. I'll prop the list up on the screen, actually. Okay, these to-do list. Today's date is April. 26th. It's a Friday. And I have a lot to do today. Like I said, I have a lot of essays that have to be done for class today because I have an ethics class that requires two essays. One of them fifteen hundred words and the other is just one page. And then I have a psychology essay that is not has a doesn't have a word requirement. It just has a content requirement, so it's kind of annoying, but as a psych student, what can you do? So the first thing on my list is I have a lot of things that are due tomorrow, April 27th, so I'll put this as due. Oh four twenty seven. And that is both my ethics essays. So the first ethics essay is my research essay. It's about fifteen hundred words. I'm already fifteen hundred words. Slash slash six to seven pages. I'm already three out of the seven pages in, so that's already pretty good. I'm okay with that. The next essay that is actually due is also a um. A evaluation of like a. A TV show. Or piece of media, so um that one's only going to have to be about two pages, so. We'll put PG. PG. Now for this one, I am kind of thrown off because at the moment I am currently watching a show called War of Faith. It is a Chinese TV show with Wong Yip Ho because I like him. And I saw it randomly on YouTube and it's actually what made me fix my like repay for my Ichi subscription because the rest of the episodes are on Ichi. And I'm watching it, but I am only like a quarter way of this paper through because. I realized as I was watching the show and looking up the descriptions for like what I was going to put into my essay. Um it is a show about communism and so I had to put like a disclaimer in. To my essay and so that threw me off from doing whatever I was supposed to do for the rest of the day because I was like flipping out about the fact that I didn't want to choose a new show. To go over, but also because I was already watching it. Like I'm on, I'm not very far in the show at the moment. I'm only seven pages, seven episodes in. But I'm also watching like three other shows at the same time, so. And I didn't, they none, the three shows that I chose with like um the other three shows I've been watching are We Are The Series, which is a Thai series. Um I'm kind of like slightly watching, what is that thing called? What is that? What is that show called? Goodness gracious. Two Worlds, another Thai series, and I'm also watching Unknown, which is the a Taiwanese series. And I don't, they're not, the three of them aren't really anything that can be like pushed for like our ethics paper. And so part of our ethics book is war, so I'm just gonna use. War, war, terrorism in the government to do a paper on communism, so. That's so much fun. I'm so excited, but that's something that has to get done. Next on the list is I actually have to also do um sex, gender and sexuality. Homework. We're gonna just say sex, gender. Homework. Which is, this is like I have a discussion board and a quiz. And all three of those, all of this is all due tomorrow, so that's so much fun. Now, I'm not really pressed about this because like I said, I'm almost done with all of like my essays. As soon as the essays are turned in, it'll be like a quick run-through for like the actual homework that I have to do. Cause it usually only takes me like a day and that's in like a one to two hour period. And so there's that. The next thing that I have to do is some homework for my what's it called class? What class is that? My uh psychology class. Psych. Psych and all that's not due till like Sunday, so I'm not really like pressed about it, but I do have a two like psych homework things that I have to do. Psych homework and we're gonna just put a two because they're very simple and don't require much out of me. And then I also have a psych paper. Again, this is a paper that is um it's just a research paper on social co- social um. Social behavior psychology and like it doesn't have like a content need. It just has. It doesn't have a word count or a page count. It just has a content need. I have to have three outside resource, research resources. Two in-book resources and then it has a list of things that I've already done, which I'm gonna take you through my essay writing process just to show you guys like how I write essays and how. It works for me, so that's so much fun. So psych paper, which is due Sunday. Okay, there's that. Something else that really needs to get done is I do have two exams. I have an ethics exam and a trigonometry exam. I don't really have to study for either of them because they're both open book. Because my trigonometry teacher kind of sucks and then my ethics teacher has always allowed us to do our exams open book, just right on a note page. And then the notes that you have for whatever that is, you can use it on the essay. So I need to finish going over my trig prior exams. So that I can be able to study for the actual trig exam on Monday. Cause I have both my exams are due Monday or will they open on Monday and so I'm gonna just do them on Monday. I'm gonna do my ethics exam first and then my trig exam. So I also need to put out my ethics notes. And then random thing, FAFSA is due in like two weeks, so. FAFSA. F A F. FAFSA is due in two weeks, so I need to do my FAFSA application, which I have just not gotten to. But that's a personal thing. I also need to go ahead and order groceries today because I don't wanna do it next week because I kinda need groceries at the moment. If you don't know, I live in an apartment pretty far away from what I like to call civilization or just general public. Um I have to walk like forty-five minutes to get my groceries, so instead I do a luxury, this is a luxury of mine that I will never give up. Um is having someone deliver my groceries because I don't like to do shit. So I'm just gonna do a delivery order and then have them deliver it to my apartment. I always do mine by a Target. That's a personal thing. That's a personal option, personal choice. Um I do mine by a Target and then I just have it delivered to my apartment door and then I just put my dishes away, my groceries away, so I didn't need to order groceries today. Um but the main thing that needs to happen like in the next few minutes before we can even get started on any of this is I need to clean my desk off. I've been randomly depressed just in the past like week or so, which is why I'm so behind on all of my homework. Cause honestly, I've had like three weeks to do my homework, but my period started last week and it was not fun and I did not enjoy it. So that's kind of what's going on. I quite literally had like a full-on like. Just mental breakdown last week because I also had a lot going on. Like I just had a horrible week last week, so I have not been able to get a lot of stuff done. So what we're going to do this week is we're going to like go to, what we're gonna do today is clean up. Get some homework done because next week I'm off for like two weeks for the semester being over and then I get back into doing. Statistics and I have pre-calculus that I have to take both of those. I am fine with taking both. People keep looking at me like I'm crazy because I'm doing a fast track and I'm doing it um online and I'm like, that's easy. I can do that. Being in person is what pisses me off, so. Let's get started in cleaning up this fucking desk so I can get some work done and I'll take you guys through like my homework and my um essay work style. So. Okay, my desk is officially clean. I am ready to get to work, but the first thing is I usually, for when I'm doing my studying. I usually like to start off on like a eleven o'clock or like eleven thirty. Currently it is twelve fifteen, so I'm gonna, it's turned to twelve thirteen, so I'm going to wait till twelve thirty to begin my session, so. Quick rundown of how I do my sessions for when I'm doing homework or I'm doing studying, especially when I'm like on the weekends. Um so I like to work in a twenty fifty twenty kind of session. So fifty minutes of work, twenty minutes of rest, fifty minutes of work and I switch what I'm doing from one thing to the other. So like for today, the first thing I want to work on is my ethics essay, my first ethics essay, and I'm gonna work on that for fifteen, fifty minutes. Twenty minutes, I'm gonna take a break and usually if I'm cleaning my room, then I'll get up, I'll do something. Or I'll sit at my desk and I'll relax via my phone or I'll do something, maybe turn on like an episode, something. I'll just like do something. In this particular case, I'm going to be doing like, because I need to also do like my groceries and stuff like that. I'm gonna just order my groceries and let them bring it to me and when it gets here, I'll just go ahead and bring it inside, put it away and then pause my fifty or my twenty. Keep it going. Either way, I'm just gonna take a break and go ahead and get my groceries in, out into the door, clean up, stuff like that. So for when I do my fifty twenty fifty, a fifty minute plus a twenty minute plus another fifty minute equals two hours. So in that time, I've usually done like two hours of work. I could probably get one, I could probably get my big essay for my research. For my two big essays done in a two fifty-minute periods and then my smaller essay I could probably get in maybe. Another fifty-minute period and then the rest of my homework I get done in another two-hour period, so. This works perfectly for me. I've seen people also do like the hour and then five minutes, like an hour and five minutes. Me personally, I need more time to like mentally like de-stress from what I've been doing and I also need a little bit extra time in like focusing on like. Something else to be able to like be able to fully put my energy in and I need a bigger reward than I, than people who need the like the hour and the five minutes. I feel like there's not enough reward time for me to relax while I'm doing my studying and I'm more locked in during that fifty minutes. And because I'm so locked in during that fifty minutes, I get a lot more stuff done. I've seen people that do a study for like four to five hours and they're still like flipping out about shit. If I can get my stuff done within like a two-hour period, I'm actually pretty proud of myself. And a lot of times when I do my twenty-minute breaks, I get up, I walk around, I do something and so when I get back, I'm ready to be locked right back in. It works for me. If it doesn't work for you, that's perfectly fine, but this is how I work. It has shown me honestly. I've been doing this for like now two years. And honestly, it's the best way for me to work. I cannot do anything else. It does not work for me. I've tried doing like the hour and ten minutes, hour and ten minutes, but I lost focus about like the second time I did an hour. And I was like, I, my ADHD also really is obsessed with time. I'm oddly obsessed with time and so an hour and ten minutes like. Puts me at like an hour and ten and then it's, it. Too much hard work, too much ridiculousness and like I like to end on a certain time. So like I'm gonna start at twelve thirty, it'll be fifty minutes. Usually about this, um if I do it correctly, like I usually do. Then I'll be able to end like maybe eight or eight thirty or nine on the dot. So like and that'll be my last session for the day. I've gotten a bunch of shit done and I've been working for like nine hours, so. I'm fine with it. It usually equals about like a good amount of work, so. We'll see how much work we can get done within that first fifty minutes and I'll check you in with you in that twenty and then another fifty, twenty, fifty, twenty. And like I said, I like to switch between the subjects because I will lose focus on a subject if I'm staring at it for too long. And so leaving off of one subject and switching to the other allows me to like completely lose focus of what it is. Especially if it was frustrating me, it gives me time to like think about it and come back to it without stressing me out for a long period of time. I'm fine with that. Um so like I said, we'll do ethics essay one, ethics essay two, then ethics homework one, ethics homework two. Which probably I can get both done in a like a fifty-minute period, honestly. And then my psychology essay and then I should be good to go. Um so right now, I'm going to really quickly start writing down like my grocery list so that when my twenty comes up later. I can just immediately go into doing my um putting in my grocery order. And sending that off. Another thing I forgot to say, I do have to edit and upload a TikTok today, so that's gonna be fun. Probably also be simultaneously filming while also doing this, so. Let's begin this grocery list. Okay, for whenever I have to do research essays that require a large amount of research out of me, I try and make sure that I do a very smart thing. Which I tell people all the time to do, which is make a list of one, the information that you need to put in the essay. Two, kind of like a like breakdown of what each paragraph is gonna be and whether or not like what. Key things will tie into like what your prompt is from your research teacher and like just the things it requires. Now I've been doing this for a while now and thankfully this is kind of like my last semester where this is like a prominent thing for me. Um until like my, I have a psych class in the fall. And that'll probably require me to do one essay. Other than that, none of my classes should require me to do any more essays like this. But when I'm doing a research essay, I try and like go through and I like to set out all of the different items that I need to go over. So for this particular essay, it was doing a research essay on the ethics of or the moral duties, I call it the moral duties to queer communities. Now, the teacher asks us to choose a subject that tied into morality and do some like. Basic research over how that kind of tied in with like our classes. Or like our things that we've gone over in class. And so for me personally, I decided to do um the moral ethics that the government has to its. To its people and to society and how that ties into queer queer rights and queer laws. Now, when I do my essays, like I said, I like to section them into pieces. So for this particular essay, I decided to section each point, bullet point on my like research like. Like page printout kind of thing, which I showed you at the beginning, into each philosopher that I need to do research on. So I need to go through the book. I need to find certain things that they like believe in or things that tie into their essays and then I need it to. The highlighted pieces are the things that tie into each essay and how I can explain them. A lot of the um stuff that I wrote for each person is answers from my questions from my discussion boards, which I will show you like how I do my discussion boards later. Not in-depth, but like a overall just an explanation of how I do my discussion boards, especially for this class. Um but because I'm able to section everything into a particular section, I can easily implement it into the essay where it needs to go. And I put them in order of the way that I need to put them into the actual essay uh by paragraph. So I also had some research that I had that was older that I kind of pulled in and put into this essay as well. And there was no requirement for how many like um outside research sources that I need, so I kind of just implemented it wherever it needed to tie in. To each particular um. What is it philosopher? No, I didn't end up using all these philosophers, but I like to have like more research than I need. For all of my questions because I sectioned my essay into healthcare, um basic morality, morals of the government and then economics. So going kind of through each section of like our ethics class and I highlighted read whatever author that I got finished with. So if I got finished with an author, their name would get highlighted red and I would, that's an author that I already used. I already made a paragraph on them and I don't need to come back to this. I also like to go through my essays and I like to do the research that I have from the book first or any research off the top of my head before I start implementing, implementing any more research. And then after I put in all that research from both the book and any papers, I then proceed to go back in and I add in all of my citations and things like that. It makes my life a lot easier to do all the citation stuff at the end, cause then I can focus on just the information at the moment. And then I'll probably highlight in my like research or highlight in the um book wherever I need to pull it. Given the pages, given my citations, put in my references and maybe I'll run it through either like my um. My sister or like a teacher or anything like that and it's good to go and turned in. my sister or like a teacher or anything like that and it's good to go and turn in okay first fifty minute session is done I have gotten another full page in on my essay and I have really solidified what I need to add into this essay so the next process that I'm going to do would be um go ahead and doing the next page of the essay and then doing all of the information input and then references and then I'll be done next we're gonna do that war though with my essay on the war faith TV show uh which probably will take me less time because it doesn't need any references references it just needs information from the book um I may tackle in the little reference piece at the bottom because maybe I just need it um because I need it for the book other than that I should be good to go um I am about to start doing like the pricing for my grocery list so that's what I'm about to do chill here for a second before getting back into it so now it's time for the first twenty minute break session I'm just kind of gonna sit here with my headphones in also I like to work with my headphones in because I do have roommates and so they do get up and they do things and so that'll distract me so headphones in full volume let's go alright so essay number two for my ethics class this is my ethical issues in media essay now this is not a research essay there's a different way how I do kind of like off the dome how I do research essays versus like a essay that's asking me a question and asking me my thoughts now for this particular section I didn't need any references and I didn't need to uh make a reference page for anything in this book they just asked that I kind of give my thoughts and interesting things and I can pull information from the book which I ended up doing so for me personally I whenever I have essays that are not research based I always kind of just like off the dome to start writing everything down and putting everything in so for this essay it was an essay that was talking about uh ethical find ethical issue in a media or like show that you're watching and kind of show how like the morale the morals or anything that you learn in the book relate to the essay I did the show war war of faith which is a Chinese show about communism and I ended up talking heavily about uh war and how war affects people because part of our um ethics book or kind of yeah our ethics book is um the morals of ju- a just war and the morals of terrorism I ended up loving kind of like this essay I ended up kind of like sitting there and getting it done within like the first fifty minutes and I was kind of done with it after that um it was actually a pretty easy essay to run through I just had to make sure that I had the right information from the show now I hadn't finished war faith at the time that I'm writing this essay where I think right now where I am in the moment that I'm recording this I think I'm on episode seventeen and there's like forty episodes so so I'm not very far in this essay but I'm not very far in the show but I was able to give like the preliminaries to this episode this essay mainly because I like to watch shows with that I have a little bit more information on before I kind of like actually get into them but I actually really loved how the essay came out and when I do these kind of things I kind of just go off the dome and it takes me about maybe an hour to do a full essay and I'm chill and then usually I get a pretty good grade on it if it does not require research that I do not make it outline I just kind of just bleh onto a page and then go back reread it I this is the only time like I actually reread these essays is because if I need to like correct anything or like change some words or run it through how it sounds and that's usually where like my grade comes down on my essays is like how articulate I was but I actually really enjoyed this essay and I got a pretty good grade on it so period okay it is officially three forty I just got finished with my I think third fifty minute session I can't remember I'm not keeping fucking track of time uh and I did in fact for groceries I have also turned in the first essay it was the smaller essay on war faith which I've already turned that in and I've started working on the last bits of like the full essay of my other ethics essays so like I'm almost finished like writing out the actual stuff before I start implementing all the information that needs to be put in via my research and also like stuff from the book um and once that is done I can turn all of that in and because I'm so I'm gonna go right back to doing that instead of like switching over to something no I actually have to switch over to something else that I think about it um oh I just got the text that I am now getting the person to pick up my groceries perfect so by the time I get done with my next session my grocery should be here and we're gonna take like an hour break to eat lunch and to like sit down eat relax for a bit and then get right back to it because right now I'm starving so I've like put in some stuff some stuff for any groceries and things like that so that'll be fun and that is what is happening so when I say down groceries done two essays two homeworks and uh some more homework to go so next is working on some psych stuff and that'll be easy to do those first two things will be easy to do I'll get those done and then go work on that psych essay I'm not excited but I'm gonna do it also now that I'm close up on my face you can kind of see my skin I don't know if you guys watched last week's video but last week's video is mainly based on like my skin my skin's been getting better not gonna lie ignore that that was me I did that um it's smoother it feels cleaner at times I didn't wash my face this morning and I did put on everything but sunscreen I know I know don't talk to me I don't care um I did have this huge fucking pimple that hurts like a motherfucker like right here on my fucking cheek but um I get those every so often and I have not yet figured out how to prevent those so hopefully by the next three months or by the time I rented all of my products uh my skin will start have cleared up some if that's not working I'm going back to K beauty and you can't stop me but yeah so that's that I'm tired most relaxed wish fun to my um personal shopper and keep back to work okay um it is currently almost five o'clock I have like ten minutes to five o'clock um and I'm going to go eat something and relax for a bit um I should be back doing homework no later than six o'clock and then I'll work till nine on my essay and the ethics work that I have to do I've done um my grocery delivery I put those away I also then did a part of my psych homework I honestly could do the next part pretty easy and turn it in and then go back to working my ethics paper but I may focus on my ethics paper first um because I do have research I need to put in there and like stuff from the book that needs to go into there and then I'll like pull up my word count by a bunch and so that'll be easy fun and yay so right now I'm about to go eat something because I'm starving and maybe turn on either YouTube or probably I she and watch some more war faith at least we've gotten one essay down and one piece of homework so it's not a lot in people's perspective but in my perspective I've done a lot and so last bits of today is ethics homework and maybe some of my I'm gonna just go straight to all of my ethics homework and we'll just switch between that and this homework let's go okay food is done I just made some ramen because that's what I bought and I'll cook real food tonight but I'm tired about to eat um I don't really know what time it is I'm not really checking but I am about to watch some more of um war faith was what I was watching while I was like putting together my food I was also like emptying dishwasher doing other things so time to eat bye see you soon alright assignment number three so this is kind of just my discussion board for my class so this is how I run through and I do my discussion boards usually for each of my online classes it's usually one discussion board and then one quiz uh the quiz in this particular section I kind of just didn't worry about that I finally was mainly focused on getting this discussion board up because it will take the most time I ended up not being able to finish it this day and I ended up finishing it the next day and then like typing it up that night and turning it in at like eleven fifty eight I know that sounds kind of crazy but like that's the time that I had and because it's like these discussion boards particularly are like things you have to read essays on and then answer the que- answer a question from the essay and then read through and find the answers to each of these questions now I got a one hundred on this just because like that's kind of like your base grade and then he'll give you like any tips or anything like that so the grade on this didn't really matter but when I do a discussion board I'd like to get all the questions out of the way I write all of my questions down first and then I proceed to move on to answering all of those questions and then do a full type up of type up at the end sometimes I'll type it within the canvas app which is the app that we use for all of our classes here at Santa Fe or I'll do it in documents and then just copy and paste it over I only do the copy and paste it over if it is a discussion board that requires a certain amount of of certain amount of words and this ethics class is not that usually I have that for like my psych class or my American history class where you'd have to have a minimum amount of words to answer to uh meet the requirements for your discussion board but for my ethics class it was just kind of like okay here are the essays you need to read and the questions you need to um answer so after that I just kind of wrote all those down ended up typing them up and turning it in whenever I do one of these it's pretty easy to get through and then it gets tiring after a while because it's a lot of writing and because my ethics teacher is a butt it's usually eight to ten questions that are like essay questions so can be a bit of a headache but it's not hard to do but it's just like writing more essays for his class goodness gracious okay it is later I am done with now my other essay and I turned it in I got started on my ethics notes as you saw me working on I've gone pretty far this doesn't seem like a lot but when you're reading through five to six separate like essays on the same thing over and over again currently I'm on race and then I have gender um I only have to do one more like race question section and I've already read through it I just have to write down the answer to the question and then I am going to do I have like one more discussion question and then I'm going to sex uh I'm going from race to gender and then do those questions and then I can like type it up and turn it in tomorrow which is gonna be pretty easy and then I do the quiz and I have two attempts at the quiz so that's pretty easy after that I just have my psych essay to do which I'm not too too stressed about that it's not due till Sunday evening and I have Sunday off so that means I can just kind of sit in my room and type it by itself without like any other distractions and after that I'll be chill ready to go I might sit down I might still do like my ethics notes uh for my ethics exam on Monday and I also will probably go over my trig notes for my trig exam on Monday so I have a lot going on but I got some stuff done I'm almost finished with my ethics class which is gonna make me so happy I'm completely finished with my Chinese class and I'm completely finished with my um nope I'm just just my Chinese class She's the, she's the only teacher that I like, but you know. Thank you. And like I said at the beginning of this video, this is kind of a study with me to show you like some of the tips I use to study here at home to try and like keep my grades where they are. They are sitting at a seventy, like a ninety and eighties. Uh, two of those eighties are, one of those eighties is not my fault, the other eighty is my fault. Um, and then other than that, my grades sit at like almost complete As at all times. Uh, so, these are things that work for me, they might not work for you, but if you like these little study tips, let me know. I mean, if you need more from me, let me know. Honestly, I sit here and I study, I'm a student, and I don't really have anything else to do. But if I was able to help you, please let me know, and thank you guys for so much for like sitting and studying with me, and I will see you guys in the next video. If you like me and want to see more of me, here's all of my social media links, right here. Um, I still will have my TikTok link in my bio until it dies, but you know. It's only a matter of time. But anyways, you guys have a great day, I'll see you, bye.